Mark Paulson. Angelica Peralta. Mike Schneider. And Stutter. Aaron Zaz.
Oscar.
Oh, I'm sorry, Aaron Ward. Sorry. Give you the names. Linda Zaz. Laura Adams. Nicholas Chiafuza. Did I get that close?
That's perfect.
All right. Angelica Benamonté. Roxy Boger. Steven Volter. Leanna Brooks. And Courtney Buck. All right. So we just want to say thank you to you all for giving up your time and to your families for giving us for all those weeks. And I did hear that you all think that the police were the biggest highlight of it, right? So council, next year we got to step it up. I don't know what we did, but we got to police. But thank you guys all for attending. We certainly appreciate it. Congratulations. All right. Andy's going to tell us how to... I'm just sending to these two big guys.
Taller individuals in the back. Look them up.
That could be Donna Erkels.
Whoever's in the back. You two in the very back. I have you two switch.
Give me a start.
There we go. All right. Ready? One, two, and three. Couple more. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Great. Thank you.
Have a good one.
Thank you, guys.
All right, we're doing the acknowledgements today. So I'd like Micah Bernhard to come on up. So if you can't tell from the purple crocs already, Micah is the Bern. Oh, God. Okay. So I already warned Micah that we've got two Pondo alumni on the council as well. We're hoping they'll entertain themselves. Now, Micah is an art teacher at Pondo and as well as being named the High School Art Teacher of the Year. So this is a certificate of recognition awarded to Micah Bernhard, High School Art Teacher of the Year. This award represents excellence in contributions, dedicated service, and professional achievements of outstanding educators in the field of visual arts and education. So congratulations, Micah. When I don't have like, you know, 20 of them up here, will I just get one on one? So what is your favorite part about being an art teacher?
The kids. I get to work on the kids' grass. If they're not artistic, I can put my room because their senior has to have art credit. By the end of this semester, they wish they would take it.
So what would you say is their favorite part of being in the Bernhardt class?
The safety and the break from everything else. They enjoy coming with my classes.
Well, that sounds like a great answer and why you're Teacher of the Year. So congratulations again.
I could roll that thing out.
Oh, you. Anne, I may have to step over just a little bit. There we go. All right. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Thanks, Mike. I needed the help.
Is it the state?
Congratulations.
This sweat was our...
All right. I have an agenda up here. There it is.
Don't move any better.
All right, we'll move on to public comment. Item number three. Public comment is an opportunity for town residents and other interested individuals to speak on items not on the agenda. So anything not on the agenda. Comment period is limited to the first 30 minutes of the meeting, and then if we have run over, we'll catch it up at the end. And individuals are allowed to speak for a maximum of three minutes. So anyone in the audience tonight wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, and we've not received any by electronic means. So we'll move on to item number four. Reports, items, and comments from mayor and council. Start with newly-elected council member Barrington. Newly re-elected, I apologize.
I was frantically trying to put together my last two weeks. It's been kind of a whirlwind. To say that it's been a busy couple of weeks would be an understatement. November... So let's see. Since the last meeting, November 8th, I attended an election night party. The very next day, we were back at it at a Greater Parker Foundation budget meeting, and we finalized the board policy manual, made a few changes, approved the mission statement. I also attended several events, but I'm going to get the names of them wrong right now. So Douglas County, the reception we had for...
Partnership of Douglas County Governments.
And then we also had...
State of the county.
The state of the county. Thank you. So we were pretty much all there. But anyway, it's been a busy week. Thank you. Glad to be back.
Councilman Dyak.
Thank you very much. On the 9th of November, I attended a Lone Tree Rail Tour set up by City of Lone Tree, Bicycle Colorado. Dr. Cog was there, E-470 was there, a bunch of other people were there. But it just, Lone Tree wanted to show us how they are building the town around rail. The 10th, E-470, we largely discussed 2023 toll rates. The discussion will be continued till December. Let's see. Town of Parker Investment Advisory Meeting on the 15th, that is where we have a couple of citizens who are financial experts come and review what our investment advisor Chandler Asset Management is doing with the town's funds. And again, no issues, and it's very, very safe investments. I attended on the 15th, again, the Cultural Commission meeting. We had three members who were rolling off, and one of note was our chair, Diane Roth. After 11 years of being a part of the Cultural Commission and being chair for most, if not all, of those, she is going on to greener pastures, but she tells us she will still be around. And a few other council members showed up as special guest stars. Hendricks and Rivera. 16th, Dr. Cog, or yeah, Dr. Cog Board Meeting. We largely talked about our Transportation Improvement Plan Call Three recommendations. What does that mean? Roughly, we gave away or we provided roughly $49 million, or awarded $59 million to various projects around the region. And then on the 17th and 18th, I filled in for the mayor, the Nutcracker of Parker. I did the mayor's toast. I was the understudy. It was so apropos, to use the arts or the theater terms. And the Chamber Economic Update Breakfast, it was a very chilly and frosty morning, and I think all went well there. So thank you.
Well, John, I'd just like to say too, thank you so much. I don't think in the last two months, I don't think there's ever been a mayor pro tem that has filled in so much in two months. So I appreciate it. And I know the Nutcracker was out of your comfort zone to do that too. So I appreciate that very much.
I did not dance on stage.
Okay, all right. Well, I heard there's video, so. Councilman Hendricks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, on nothing to report.
And Councilman Pope. Councilmember Pope, sorry.
I think Councilmember Barrington listed them all, so that's good.
Awesome. And Councilman Rivera.
Thank you, Councilman. Hendricks and I did interviews last week, three days of interviews. We had, we have a new commission, Parker Recs and Open Space Commission. And we did interviews. 21 people applied. We did 19 or 20 interviews, and can make a decision here next week and get you guys a, or get the council, a commission to talk about Parks and Rec with our staff and do some wonderful things. Very excited to get that started and look forward to it. Again, we are gifted in this town, in this county, with volunteers. The level of quality and expertise that you get just in volunteer realm is absolutely amazing to me. I mean, experts in the field that just want to help out their town. It's absolutely fascinating. We had the Parker Economic Forum Breakfast, very good get-together. You know, the direness of the economy as is was presented in a very fun and informative way. The speaker was very good. We had State of the County, which was great. County's in good health. Mostly spent time talking about ARPA funds and one-time windfalls. But I happen to know that the county is in good health besides those monies. And then Thursday morning, I had the Chair Creek Basin Water Quality Authority, our regular meeting, plus a budget hearing. We passed our budget, and your mill levy will be staying the same. Your mill levy goes to improvements on the creek and in the tributaries to benefit flood control and benefit the reservoir as a whole. And then again, as Councilman Dyak said, longtime volunteer Diane Roth is moving on, and we got a chance to have a beverage with her and thank her so very much, as much as we could at least, for her dedication to our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Awesome. Thank you all. We'll move on to item number five, Consent Agenda. The consent agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There'll be no separate discussion on the consent agenda items unless council votes to remove an item for individual discussion. Ordinances on the consent agenda item are for introduction only and will not be removed for discussion. So council, you have items A through M for your consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items A through M, please.
All second. Motion is made by Councilman Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. Rivera?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. Next up is the first of our first public hearing tonight, and that will be on the Pope Property Annexation. So I will open this public hearing at 7:18 PM. This will be on the Pope Property Annexation, applicant David Brim, Plan West. And we will also include Resolution Number 22-061, a resolution set forth town council's findings of fact and conclusions as to the eligibility of the Pope property for annexation into the Town of Parker. Stacy Nergel, you're up.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you. So as just stated, this is Resolution Number 22-061 to set forth the findings of fact for the Pope property annexation.
Stacy, might you turn it on? Sorry.
That would help. Okay. So the applicant, the Denver Pope Family Limited Partnership, has submitted... ...which determined that the annexation petition substantially complies with state statute and set the public hearing date for November 21st, 2022, to determine eligibility of this annexation. The town has identified the property as a candidate for future annexation through the annual three-mile plan and the Parker 2035 Master Plan. Therefore, the proposed annexation is consistent with the town's land use policy as expressed in both of those plans. The subject property is eligible for annexation because it is located within the town's planning area or the urban growth boundary and satisfies the contiguity requirements of the Annexation Act. If town council approves Resolution Number 22-061, it will determine that the subject property is eligible for annexation into the town as provided by the Act. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 22-061 and to set the public hearing for the annexation ordinance on February 6th, 2023. The applicant is here tonight and available for any questions you may have, and this concludes staff's presentation.
Great. Thank you, ma'am. We'll go to questions of the staff, starting with Councilman Rivera.
No questions.
Councilmember Pope?
No questions.
Councilman Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilman Dyak?
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions.
Great. With that, do we have an applicant and a presentation?
We do not have an applicant or a presentation tonight, but Mike is available for any questions you may have.
Come on up, because I'm sure we might have some questions from the council. And we'll just go in reverse order on questions for the applicant. But if you'll state your name and address just for the record?
I will do that. Mayor and council, my name is David Brim. I'm with Plan West. We're land planners and landscape architects. Excuse me. It's always great to be in Parker. It's been a while since I've been here, you know, pre-COVID and all that.
So I'm just wondering, what was the biggest hurdle you have had to leap over to get to this point?
Wow.
There's been a lot of them, but I'm wondering.
Well, that's a loaded question, councilwoman.
I can't leave here without giving you some loaded questions.
Well, I'll have to think. I'll have to think about that. We're still into some big hurdles getting through the annexation, and I don't want to preempt them because we're still very optimistic we're going to get through those. So realistically, this is not a big, this is not a complicated project. There's just a lot of moving parts. But if you take each one of them by itself, like the floodplain, I mean, it has to go through a floodplain amendment. I mean, that under itself is a pretty big project that the town has taken on. You know, the alignment of the roadway, you know, it's both the Douglas County and Parker, so that collaboration has to happen. It's zoned in Douglas County. Here's an interesting one that I think is really kind of fun. You know, part of the Pope family will be zoned agriculture, modified agriculture, but called agretainment. That's a whole new world.
7:24. Anyone from the public wishing to make comments on this resolution? Seeing none, we'll close it at 7:24, and we'll close the public comment, I'm sorry, public hearing also at 7:24, and bring it back to council for final debates or comments. And we'll start again in reverse order with Councilmember Rivera.
No comments, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Pope?
No comments.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No comments.
Councilmember Dyak?
No comments.
And Councilmember Barrington?
No comments. Thank you.
All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion on Resolution Number 22-061.
I move to approve Resolution Number 22-061.
Second.
I also need... Want me to read the whole thing, please? Yes. Okay. I move to approve Resolution Number 22-061 and set the public hearing for the annexation ordinance on February 6th, 2023.
Great. And your second? Okay. Motion is made by Councilmember Pope, seconded by Councilmember Dyak. Rivera?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. So Mike Smith, does this mean you're going to be an agretainer? Agra... agretainer? All right, awesome. A new role for you. It's about time you got a job. I love it. I love it. I love it. All right, we're going to move on to ordinances for tonight. First ordinance up is ordinance number 4.110.1 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to amend Chapter 11.19 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning contractor registration. Dale?
Good evening, mayor.
Is that an annual fee?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Rivera?
So Dale, knowing what I know and understanding what it is we're doing for the citizens, if I was a citizen and I didn't know, I would read this white paper and think bureaucracy and think that we're just tying up the thing. But can you talk a little bit about what it is we're doing it and why we're doing it, please?
So why we're doing it, it starts with...
The people's government is actually advocating for the private homeowner.
Yes.
Outstanding. Thank you, sir.
Councilman Dyak?
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions.
All right, with that...
4.110.1 on second reading, please. All second.
Okay. Motion is made by Councilman Rivera, seconded by Councilman Hendricks. Rivera?
Aye.
Pope?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. Next up is ordinance number 1.571 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to vacate slope easements on Track A-1. And Track B, Parkertown Center, as described in the final rule and order recorded at reception number 2005076961 pursuant to Section 13.07.120(c)(5) of the Parker Municipal Code. Mr. Smith, did I give you enough time to get up here?
That was great.
All right, perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Good evening. Before you, as a request to vacate two slope easements on two downtown parcels that are slated for development. So this first slide is a vicinity map of the Parkertown Center subdivision. It's made up of three tracks in the downtown. You can see the area shaded in blue on the map. On Track A1 and B are the slope easements that are requested to be vacated along Pine Drive. So again, there is proposed site plans in, currently under review for both of those tracks. The developers requested the vacation of the slope easements to facilitate development along Pine Drive there. Just as a refresher for the council, when the town is building or widening a roadway, we take a slope easement to allow us to construct what we call the back slope of the roadway. I'll show you pictures of the existing conditions out here. This first picture is of Track A1, so you're looking north along Pine Drive towards Main Street. You can see there's about a three-foot tall back slope there behind the sidewalk that moves down to the existing ground in the property. That is proposed to be filled with the site plan. There will actually be a building very close to the sidewalk there along Pine Drive per planings requirements. And the south parcel is a similar condition. It is a bit taller, back slope there. It's five, five feet and taller. There will be some retaining walls closer to the gulch, but again, kind of the same approach. There will be a building up close to the roadway, so they'll be filling the site and removing the back slope for the majority of that area. Just a bit more background about these particular slope easements. They were acquired in 2005 as part of a larger agreement with the former property owner. In that deal, the town acquired the right-of-way easements that were necessary to build both the widening of Pine Drive but also Pike Peak Avenue west of Pine Drive. We also obtained Track C, that other tract on the east side of Pine Drive that I pointed out on the map. We obtained that in fee as a part of the deal. In exchange, we gave the property owner forgiveness of the property's obligation to widen a portion of Pine Drive adjacent to their site. So there was no direct payment made for the easement. It was part of a larger land swap. Fast forward to today, as I mentioned, the two properties are now slated for development. They will be filling those areas and putting in walls where needed. So the back slopes will be removed, and there really is no need to have the slope easement in place anymore. With that, our code does require an ordinance to be approved by town council to vacate any easement. So staff does recommend approval of ordinance 1.571, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, moving to staff questions. Councilman Dyak?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
Thank you.
Councilmember Vera?
No questions.
All right. With that, we're going to open it for public comment at 7:33. Anyone wishing to make comments on ordinance number 1.571? Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:33. Scene nine, we'll close public comment at 7:33. Council, any further comments?
No, I mean, it's, we have our setback ordinances that require them to push right up anyway, and this, this, this slope easement is, doesn't allow their building to come up to where we want to see their building, so it's, it's, it's in our interest to vacate the easement, in my opinion.
All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion on 1.571.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.571 on second reading.
Second.
Motion is made by councilman Hendricks, seconded by councilman Rivero. Rivero?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. Next up is ordinance number 9.335.1 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance approving the first amendment to agreement regarding design and construction of drainage and flood control improvements for Cottonwood Meadows Tributary, agreement number 21-05.15A, project number 108520, by and between the urban drainage and flood control district, DVA Mile High Flood District, and the town of Parker. Mr. Grabcek, welcome.
Hi, good evening, Mr.? This project is located off the western bank of Cherry Creek within the town's Cottonwood subdivision. The limits are bounded upstream by Jordan Road and downstream by the tributary's confluence with Cherry Creek. All proposed improvements are on a drainage tract owned by the Cottonwood Metro District within a drainage easement dedicated to the town. No additional easements or right-of-way are required. The Cottonwood Meadows Tributary is one of the town's older drainage ways, originally constructed in the mid-'80s with the latest drainage study being performed in 2001. This project is intended to ensure adequate flood conveyance is being maintained while also installing improvements to enhance the drainage way's water quality, vegetation, and maintainability by town staff. This project is currently under final design and permitting, which will continue through the spring and summer of 2023. Construction is anticipated to begin in the fall or winter of '23 as well. This IGA amendment proposes no new project funds from the town, but an additional contribution from the Mile High Flood District. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 9.335.1.
Great, so we'll turn to staff questions, councilman Rivero?
No questions.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilman Dyak?
No questions.
Councilman Barrington?
No questions.
Actually, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Rivero?
Could you speak, do you think that the town's portion was increased because of the metro's inability, or was the flood district to cover the share, if you could?
Thanks, sir. Then we're going to go ahead and open up the public here comment at 7:38. Anyone wishing to make a public comment on ordinance number 9.335.1? And we're going to close it at 7:38. Council, any further comments? Councilman Rivero, Pogue?
Some of my favorite words, degradation.
Councilman Dyak?
Yeah, I mean, anytime you can get somebody else to pay for a project that we got to do, that's, that's pretty good, in my book, so appreciate Mile High Flood District and their continued efforts to, to be there so we can get a subsidy to do the projects that benefit our citizens.
Great, councilman Barrington?
Yeah, I think anytime there's a concern over stormwater, obviously you guys know a lot more of what you're doing than we do, so we appreciate your expertise, and I think this is, yeah, I think the, this, I think it's all, it's all good, we're good to go. I'm a little brain dead still.
With that, I'll entertain a motion on ordinance number 9.335.1.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve ordinance number 9.335.1, please.
I'll second.
Motion is made by councilman Rivero, seconded by councilman Pogue, Rivero?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. Next up on ordinance is number 9.338.1 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance approving the first amendment to agreement regarding design and construction of drainage and flood control improvements for Upper Jordan Road Tributary, Tributary at Bradbury Ranch, agreement number 21-05.17A, project number 108522, by and between urban drainage and flood control district, doing business as Mile High Flood District and Town of Parker. One more time.
Thank you again, councilmembers and Mr. Mayor. This ordinance is for the approval of an amendment to an IGA between the town and the Mile High Flood District to... residences within the Auburn Hills and Bradbury Ranch communities, as well as corrode crossings of Main Street and Bradbury Ranch Drive. This project has been broken into two phases. Phase one consists of improvements to the upper, to the upstream regional detention pond, while phase two improves the drainage way downstream of the pond to the town's boundary. All proposed improvements are on drainage tracks owned by the homeowners' associations in this case, with drainage easements dedicated to the, to the town, and no additional easements or right-of-way are required. This project seeks to achieve the following goals, to optimize the upstream regional pond and to detain a wider range of storm events, reduce peak flows downstream, and provide a more maintainable water quality element. To reanalyze the channel utilizing the optimized regional pond flows and mitigate any identified areas prone to localized flooding. To improve channel capacity in order to eliminate any encroachments of the floodplain onto residential lots due to aggregation or sediment buildup within, within the system. To install maintenance structures at pond outfalls to reduce sediment loading into the system and provide easier long-term removal of sediment. And to selectively remove cap tails where necessary for floodplain conveyance and keeping, while keeping the overall natural aesthetic of the drainage way. As mentioned previously, this project has been broken into two phases. Design for the phase one regional detention pond improvements has been completed and construction is anticipated to begin this coming January and be completed by the end of March. Final design for phase two drainage way improvements is underway and will be completed in 2023 within construction anticipated for the fall or winter of '23 as well. This IGA amendment proposes additional contributions, contributions of $130,000 from the Mile High Flood District and $600,000 from the town for a total IGA budget of $1,376,350. This includes a special fund transfer held in escrow from a 2006 town in Mile High Flood District project contributed with the original IGA. In addition to the project, project contribution limits within the IGA, the Mile High Flood District will be contributing up to $800,000 of maintenance funds for phase one construction of the project for the regional pond improvements. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance number 9.338.1.
Great, we'll move to staff comments, councilman Dyak, any questions?
No, no, not at all.
Councilman Barrington?
Thank you.
Great, we're going to open it for public comment at 7:43. Anybody wishing to make public comment at ordinance number 9.338.1? Scene nine, we'll close it at 7:44. Council comments, councilman Rivero?
No, I mean, this is much needed, again, the word degradation, the sediment buildup, you think of it as a very slow-moving sand wave and what we have around here, if it's not clay, it's sand, and if it moves down to the creek, it creates nightmares, again, I'll refer to Piney Creek up in Aurora and just, we almost lost homes because of the sand movement and just all accumulated down to the basin and, and not a situation we want to find ourselves in, so any chance we can to partner with Mile High, as Mr. Dyak said earlier in the previous ordinance, and get some outside dollars to help this case is hugely beneficial.
Councilman Pogue?
No.
Hendricks? Councilmember Dyak?
Yeah, my word's leverage. It's always, always good when you get about 1.3 million from somebody else over the course of what we're seeing here.
And councilman Barrington? All right, with that, we'll entertain a motion on 9.338.1.
I move to approve ordinance number 9.338.1 on second reading.
I'll second.
Motion is made by councilman Hendricks, seconded by councilmember Barrington. Rivero?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. Our last ordinance of the night is ordinance number 1.572 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance stating the intent of the Town of Parker to acquire certain property interests for the purpose of constructing and improving Pike's Peak Drive, a town roadway through the utilization of the town's power of eminent domain and directing the town staff and town attorney to notify all persons affected thereby of the standard, I'm sorry, of the above-stated intent of the town and thereafter to comply with all pertinent provisions of CRS section 38-1-101 at SEC relating to good faith negotiations. Mr. Hudson?
Pike's Peak Drive sidewalk project, a little tough to see on the screen up there, but the yellow areas are where we're going to be doing improvements, the blue areas are areas we're not going to be touching between Main Street and Sulphur Gulch. We're looking to widen the sidewalk that's out there today, it's not currently ADA compliant, to sixty, six, between six and eight feet depending on site conditions. Really, that sidewalk width is determined by trees and other constraints out there. We're going to add pedestrian lighting, the light's going to match what we did on Main Street back in 2008. And we're also going to be doing some drainage improvements to Pike's Peak Drive as well. And we anticipate to start construction next year. The town's identified 15 properties along the practical limits that either need to have permanent or, and/or temporary construction easements for these improvements. We've already been talking with landowners, 10 of the property owners have already executed or will be executing documents for this. Earlier tonight in the consent agenda, you had three easements that you approved that are tied to this as well. There remains five properties left to be, that we need to get permanent and/or temporary construction easements, four PEs, or permanent easements, and five temporary construction easements. And above, you can see the, the total area that we need to get, we'll talk a little bit more about in a minute. This is a vicinity map showing the 15 properties, and we have numbered them, just for reference, north is up, Main Street's on the north, Sulphur Gulch was on the south, and we number them down on the west side or the left side, top to bottom, and then go over the other side. So the highlighted yellow parcels are the ones that we do not currently have easements in place or an agreement in place on, the five parcels. This is a blow-up, this is north of Pike's Peak Avenue. You can see north of Pike's Peak Avenue, we have two parcels on the east side that we need to yet acquire easements from. South of Pike's Peak Avenue, this is a blow-up, we've got one on the left or on the west, and two on the right or on the east side, south of Pike's Peak Avenue intersection. I'm going to go into each property in a little bit more detail, this is in the, the packet that you guys have seen. Property number five, this is a permanent easement, two and a half feet wide. Behind it is a temporary construction easement, roughly four feet wide that we have to acquire for the sidewalk. Property 11, we've now jumped over to the east side of the road. This is a permanent easement, two and a half feet in width, length of the frontage. Property number 12 is a permanent easement that we have to acquire approximately two and a half feet in width, the length of the frontage, to build this wider sidewalk and Property number 12 also includes a temporary construction easement shown here, this is actually around on the side on Pike's Peak Avenue, necessary for us to tie in the sidewalk that we're going to build. Property number 13 is just south of Pike's Peak Avenue, we have two temporary construction easements, we need to build the sidewalk that we're going to build. Property number 14 is a, is a narrow, half-foot-wide permanent easement for the full length. And there's two additional smaller easements where we're able to widen the sidewalk out due to constraints, so they're written as a separate legal description. Temporary construction easement on property 14 is shown here. The area in the middle is actually a driveway that we have to make ADA compliant, so we have to get a temporary construction easement at that driveway. Acquisitions on this are typically very linear and adjacent to the existing Pike's Peak Drive right-of-way. The total permanent easements is 633 square feet or 0.015 acres, and temporary construction easements total just over 1,000 square feet, 1,063 square feet or 0.24 acres. This intent to acquire ordinance basically authorizes staff to engage in good faith negotiations with the needed, for the needed easements. If we're unable to come to an agreement with the property owners, we're going to be making cash offers for these easements. We're going to come back to council before we go with any eminent domain, this is all part of a good faith, very, very much a step process here with the property owners, we try to find an agreement before we ever go to eminent domain, that's absolute last resort. Done a lot of these easement acquisitions, and usually we can come to an agreement with most property owners. And this ordinance requires to approve the intent to acquire which allows town staff to begin formal negotiations with the property owners. As I said before, 10 of the 15 have already agreed to the informal negotiations, and with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Great, let's turn to staff questions, councilman Dyak?
Of the 15, 10 have responded pretty favorably, if that's...
Yeah, so 10 have actually either signed the documents, and when I say signed the documents, the permanent easement documents, you sign some tonight, the temporary construction easements do not come to you because they're temporary in nature. There are several property owners, I think there's four or five in the project limits, that we're actually plating their property, we're cleaning up the properties for them as part of this process, so we're helping them clean up a problem that they have on their properties because they're unplatted.
And then anytime anyone hears the words eminent domain, it, it sounds a little bit scary and heavy-handed, but really, this is just to try and get a response from the people that aren't responding and to move forward, you know, and, and give them fair market value for, for whatever, this is, but it's going to improve their property regardless.
Correct, I mean, the 10...
It says the width will vary between six and eight feet. What, what is it? I mean, I know it's different, but what is it currently? Okay, great. Thank you.
You bet.
Councilman Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilman Pogue?
Yeah, you said ADA is five feet. Why are we going six to eight?
Well, once you add the
Don't want to cut those trees down. So, next question, on those blue areas, what is the current width there so that you don't have to do any modifications?
Very cheap.
Thank you. So, two of the scariest words in local government, in eminent domain. So the steps, if you, correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to go in with negotiations and say, look, we'd really like to acquire these properties, you know, we'd pay you for these small, 633 square feet, but not even that, we're talking small amounts per, per property. Then, if that doesn't work, then we go to court. And either way, the town is going to pay these, these property owners their fair market value, correct?
That's correct. The property owners
And then, take me back, you said cleanup, and I'm thinking, or it sounds like the physical sense. We're not going in to physically clean up property. It's the paperwork at the county, correct?
It's the paperwork, so lives, properties
... in the future, that if we do not have ADA sidewalks, that the town itself could get in trouble? Or is this existing non- Question reads to a citizen initiative that was just passed in Denver to make sidewalks more inclusive. We're doing this instead. We're doing this because we recognize that these sidewalks are, are not up to standard for the current
Great. With that, we'll open this for public comment at 8:00 PM. Anyone wish to make a public comment on 1572? Seeing then, we'll close it at 8:00 PM. Council, any further comments? In certain reverse order?
No.
All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion on 1.572.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.572 on second reading.
I'll second.
Yeah, the motion is made by Councilman Dyak, seconded by Councilmember Barrington. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. Moving on to our resolutions. Resolution number 22-065, resolution approving adjustment of mill levies resulting from legislative or constitutionally mandated reductions. Madam Town Attorney?
Thank you very much, Council and Mayor. In 1982, the state approved the Gallagher Amendment, which required residential property to equal 45% of the statewide valuation for assessment, with non-residential property equalling 55% of that statewide valuation. In November of 2020, state voters
Councilman Pogue?
Yeah, with the current adjustment, are we looking at a decrease for these folks or an increase?
Address for the record in your firm.
Is the mic on or?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. I'm Dalton Kelly with the law firm Butler Snow, LLP, address 1801 California Street, Suite 5100. Councilmember Pogue?
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions.
All right. With that, we're going to open up for public comment at 8:04. Anyone on resolution number 22-065? Seeing then, we'll close it at 8:04. We'll go back in the same order on any final comments. Councilman Rivera?
No comments.
Councilman Pogue?
I just have a question. Has the town received any comments from property owners with not being able to take advantage, take advantage of the Gallagher since we've dropped it? So like, in my property, I'm not going to get this backflow to increase taxes again. Have we gotten any comment from residents?
I haven't received any comments from residents. I have received comments from the metropolitan districts about this matter, and that's the only communication I've received.
Thank you.
Councilman Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilman Dyak?
No comment.
Councilmember Barrington?
No comment.
All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion on resolution 22-065.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 22-065, please. I'll second.
Motion is made by Councilman Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Is this something I can abstain on?
No.
Or not? No. All right, I'll vote yes.
Okay. Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. With no other business for the Parker Town Council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion is made by Councilman Rivera, seconded by Councilman Hendricks. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone, and we hope to see you out at the mayor's holiday lighting on Friday night. Badoa.